Memo about the committee that we suggested that you appoint somebody from the Consolidated Facilities, if not the Director, then somebody from the staff. Because that's going to be, I think, a key connection for you with this project. And it's going to be also very important to the project to have advice from Consolidated Facilities.
Will the building come under the Consolidated Facilities?
Yes.
It will be under the Board of Selectmen. So unless you decide that you don't want it to, it's going to be owned by the town. The operation will be primarily, well, not entirely, but it will be largely provided by Milton Animal League. But you do have an animal control officer who's also staff for the building. And the town does pay for one assistant who does certain, during certain hours is there. And that, what we have proposed is that the same framework continue into the future, but in a new building, and that the town will be responsible for maintenance for the building, while most other costs will be paid for by the volunteer effort. So, it's a town building. The Consolidated Facilities Director will probably be having, be advising you about maintenance and oversight, should be anyway, if you're responsible for maintenance.
Yes.
And, but even if that weren't the case, I would ask for their expertise, if possible, to be on this committee. I think it would be a great asset. So, that's a very quick review, you know, final, you go through the entire building process, you have a lot of change orders.
Marion, sorry, there's no zoning board of appeals or planning board or anything?
No, well, this is a municipal use. So municipal use is exempt from use restrictions. This building has to comply with all of the building code requirements, all of the zoning requirements for lot distances and, you know, lot coverage, open space, parking, frontage, all the requirements that would apply to any private property will apply to this as far as zoning is concerned. But the use is a permitted use. It's on municipal land, well, if it, I'm assuming that it's going to be a site that's municipal property. There, so as far as I know right now, there is no requirement to go to the planning board or to the Board of Appeals, but we're still looking at whether we've overlooked something in that regard. A building permit itself is a step that can give rise to questions. So, even if you don't have to go to another board for permission, when a building permit is issued for a project, someone can say, gee, we don't like something about that building permit, we want to go to the Board of Appeals, or something like that.
There's no design review requirements of the planning board or anything?
Uh, no, it's not a commercial project in a commercial district, it's not a multiple unit project, so it doesn't come under design review.
Okay.
That doesn't mean that you can't get good advice, and we won't be getting good advice from the planning board, for example, on issues that relate to design. And I think it's always necessary and a good idea to submit projects like this to the management, so you have a management group from the town that reviews your project proposal, and the planning board reviews it, and they always have good suggestions. So, maybe there will be something that will have to be addressed. There should, certainly during, as the project progresses, the town should be keeping, and the animal shelter should be keeping neighbors well informed as to what the steps are and what questions might arise, and what choices might have to be made.
Okay. So, we can act on the motion tonight. We have a revised motion, it's a black line copy. Do we have a clean copy as well? Okay, good.
I'll move that the Board of Selectmen vote to establish an animal shelter advisory committee for the purpose of providing recommendations to the Board of Selectmen regarding planning, design, construction, and furnishing of a new Milton animal shelter, and regarding management decisions throughout the process of design, budget preparation, construction for a new Milton animal shelter. As that process is further defined in any specific agreements made between the Board of Selectmen and the Milton Animal League governing funding, design, construction, and management of the new animal shelter. Said committee shall consist of no more than seven members. To be appointed by the Board of Selectmen, at least one member shall be appointed, be an appointment recommended by the Milton Animal League, at least one of whom shall be the town's Consolidated Facility Director, or a designated member of the facility's management staff for the town, and at least one of whom shall be, have detailed knowledge of energy conservation techniques and technologies. And the committee members shall have architectural and design experience, experience in all aspects of construction, knowledge of energy conservation technology, municipal management experience, including construction management, and experience with Milton animal shelter operations. Committee members shall be appointed for one-year terms for each fiscal year, except that appointments prior to June 30, 2015, shall be in effect until June 30, 2016.
Good job, Tom. Second.
Any discussion on the motion? And all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, so we've approved the charge, we need some members, we have a few, the Animal League will recommend one person, but if anyone's watching or knows someone who would be a good candidate for this committee, we encourage them to contact the Selectmen's office.
And I just suggested, looking at the list of duty, of steps that have to be taken for this project, that you focus on steps one through nine, they're all sort of getting ready for the project, things that we can be working on now. Of course, selecting a site is key. But these other things are very important, and they kind of can get lost. Once all of a sudden, somebody thinks, well, let's get going, if we haven't evaluated how we want to go about managing the project from a financial standpoint, and from some of these other, in view of some of these other issues, it won't be very, it won't be as well managed as it could be. So, I, what I can do is come back, you know, where it says, for example, you know, we'll come up with a detailed list of recommendations to be submitted by the advisory committee, that means these are steps, and these are recommendations that periodically the committee will have to provide to you. We can continue to work on that and make it a little bit more detailed, maybe run it by some of the department managers and see what else should be included.
Well, I wonder if, on the board's side, would it make sense for us to delegate a town employee to be responsible for sort of the day-to-day, following through, making a checklist, making sure that we're doing what we need, thinking about what the next steps need to be, thinking about, for instance, one of these, number seven, determine any future town meeting vote. So we know we have a vote at this particular town meeting in May for the access road on the Randolph Avenue site, if that's the site. The other potential site is, of course, the current location, but there's a lot of regulatory steps involved there if it were to stay there. I think we should designate one town employee, and maybe it's the planning director, we also have an assistant town planner, but probably it makes sense to have a day-to-day person be put in charge of keeping track of all of the things that need to be done, making sure that the board's taking them on a timely basis, and that we're complying with these deadlines.
Yeah, I think it's, yeah, otherwise, if it's on nobody's radar, then it's...
Right, we have to have one, one person, the board's going to have to vote on a number of these things, and act on some of the, and make some decisions, but I think we need a town employee looking at, or being responsible for complying with the deadlines, and making sure that this is moving along.
I agree.
So, it probably makes sense for the planning, our planning director sitting in the back and smiling, because he's thinking we're...
It could be that, it could be our, it could be our new contracts person when, yeah.
In the Selectmen's office, that's true.
Selectmen's office, yeah.
That's another option. Or the assistant town planner. So, we have some more resources now in town that could be helpful in this area.
Assistant town planner is looking to... I think it's a good idea whoever you appoint, and we really appreciate that, I think that would help a lot.
Yeah, and to be interacting with the Animal League.
Yeah.
On some issues that might come up, whether it's through Consolidated Facilities, or with Marion, or the League itself.
Well, the League is a relatively small group. I communicate through the Director, or through the President, and they have very good email circulation, and the words used to get out right away. And I get comments back from a lot of people, so they're actively concerned. So I don't think it's going to be a problem keeping communication flowing, but that small group, I think it's a lot harder for the town, because everybody's busy with other things, so that'd be great.
Okay.
Great.
Anything else, Ms. Marion?
I don't think so. I'm sending you a couple more little memos, you know, and I'm going to try to highlight critical areas that I think we need to be paying attention to, some of them were mentioned tonight. And we won't have to meet with you all the time, but I'm going to keep sending memos and sort of keep the flow of communication going. And if there's anything we can do to help you with your process of site selection, of course, we're available.
So, Marion, just one last, when do you expect to have this committee together? When would you like to have it together?
Um, next week. Truthfully, we would like to have it appointed as soon as we have enough members, at least five members, I think. We want to have seven, but the committee could start if it only had five.
How many do we have now?
I don't know who we have right now, who we need to, you know, you have to get your
Pull-up bars.
Mal nominee from, by next week you'll have that person.
Well, we could try to get it off of one of the April agendas. Like we did with the SWF hat committee, to appoint some of the members when we have a group, and then appoint some others later.
Okay.
It just seems as though if you can appoint the committee, then you're going to get some help from the committee too, so that might be good.
All right, thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Marion, you're going to stay with us at the table?
I am, I just have to grab a blender.
Our planning director, Bill Clark, is also here, and Bill may want to come up to join us for this discussion. Marion, you requested this meeting with us regarding the condominium planned unit development warrant article.
Right, thank you. And first of all, I have my...
If you don't mind, we'll have Bill come up and join us at the table. Evening, Bill.
Hello.
I have my Milton Animal League hat on, so now I'm taking that off. And I'm here tonight representing a developer who's been trying to develop a site up on Hillside Street and Ford Ranch Road. And on his behalf, I've been attending the working group meetings since October. I have, not a member of the committee, but I've been sitting in, and they have been very generous about allowing all of us to enter into discussion with them about condominium zoning, and whether the town is going to be able to write somewhat more general condominium zoning that could apply to multiple sites, as they did in October for the St. Pius X site. And there's been a lot of interesting discussion, and some very good points made, and some progress has been made, but the committee is certainly not ready to have zoning, general zoning, ready for the May town meeting. Meanwhile, the developer I represent, and the owner of the land on Hillside Street, that's John Fandry, he's the owner of the land, and it's about a 13-acre site, and Todd Hamilton, who is the developer, would like to have an option sooner, the next fall, if possible. And in view of the fact that the committee, they've been very respectful of the committee process, and I think we're hopeful that the committee would be able to come up with some zoning that could be used after the May town meeting, but that hasn't happened, so, and some people, some interested persons who wanted to see a general zoning article filed the Ten Citizens article in January, and that was a very general zoning article that would apply just about everywhere, and it's been met generally in discussions with the comment that this is just too broad, it's not detailed enough, it's not defined enough, we just can't, we wouldn't be able to do this, we'd have to rewrite it or do it differently. And the working group has tried to, has done some work, a few members of that group have to rewrite that, but no agreement has been reached, it's going to take a lot more work. So, what I have done is taken a revised version, really written a new, a new version of that submission for, that would be, basically would be site-specific for the Hillside Street site, and is very detailed and very limited. So it's much narrower than the bylaw that was submitted in January. And I did that last week, after it was clear that the committee wasn't going to be able to support, you know, they weren't going to be ready with the zoning article. And at this point, at this time, it's really too late to submit a new article, because you're sending your warrant to the printer tomorrow. And special town meeting article, which would be a possible way for a new article to be submitted, would have had to be ready at least last week, if not before. So, this, if it's going to be discussed, if this version of the zoning is going to be discussed at town meeting, it has to be discussed as an amendment to the article that was submitted. And that would be a decision as to whether it can be done that way, that the moderator has to make. If the moderator is, I have emailed him and asked him what his opinion would be, whether he would be likely to allow discussion of this as an amendment, is it narrower than the scope of the article that was originally presented? I haven't heard back from him. If he says he would consider it, then I would ask the warrant committee and other town boards to look at the redrafted article in its much narrower form, and see whether they might be able to recommend that the article, recommend the article, so that we can have discussion at town meeting of an option of condominium zoning at this site. This site's been under discussion by the Fandry since 2005 for development, and they haven't, they do not have a plan, and they really want to sell the property. And at various times during that process, 40B has been discussed as an option, open space development proposal was not accepted by the planning board, so that option, you know, fell through. There's one A&R lot that's on appeal, but it's not part of the development site that we're talking about now. And condominium zoning, some type of condominium development has been discussed, we've been discussing it all year, because the site is an upland area, it has about 13 acres, it's a, it's a great, a good distance from both of the public ways. One of the sore issues with this site has been that it, there's a, there's a private way, a 30-foot private way that you can use to get into the site, but the neighbors who also share the use of that way did not want that to be used, they didn't want to see any more traffic on it. And so to build a road from another direction for a ranch road, which is substantially more expensive, and there are some wetlands, and there's a stream that you have to cross, requires that you do more development of the site. And this condominium proposal is, we think it's a viable proposal, we think it might work well, it would definitely be what I would call high-end condominium development. It would have to have affordable units, because all of the zoning that we've passed in the last few years, PUD zoning, has included an affordability component. And that's all been written into this draft. So, what I have done is I've sent the draft, I sent it to the town administrator. The Board of Selectmen have it, if you want to review it individually, feel free. I don't know what the answer is from the moderator, as to whether he's going to consider this, would be willing to consider it as an amendment. I have sent the draft to the chairman of the warrant committee, saying it's possible that we may ask you to consider this as an amendment to the zoning that's been filed. Tomorrow night is the hearing before the planning board on the zoning article that was filed, and again, I've sent Bill Clark a copy of this zoning, so that the planning board will have it, and will be aware that there would be the possibility of an amendment with, you know, much more detailed and narrower form.
Marion, can I ask a procedural question? You referred to an amendment, what I thought was that the proposal was that this narrow article would, we want you to be proposing to be the warrant committee's recommendation. Obviously, they'll have to debate it.
They were recommending that the article, that the Ten Citizens article, that they would propose this as their recommendation.
Their recommendation on your original article?
It's a wholesale amendment. It's a, and you do, that's, we see that with zoning sometimes, but yeah, that you rewrite the article, but if it's within the scope, in this case, it's much, much narrower than the original article, the warrant committee could propose it as their recommendation.
Okay.
I don't know whether they're going to, so I'm not, I mean, I wouldn't presume to say they're going to do that.
Yes, understood. I just wanted to clarify that, because I, a question about a different citizen article on that same issue about amending, it came up earlier tonight, right before the meeting, so.
Okay.
So you're not really, so the article is what it is, what you're proposing is the war, this revision would be the warrant committee's recommendation under the article, even though the wording's different, it's a narrower proposal.
Yes. The article I gave to Mrs. Bagan last week was written as an article, it would not be, it would be preambled by a recommendation article.
The recommendation.
I would propose that, I would hope that the warrant committee would consider doing that. The purpose of this is to get this discussion in front of town meeting, at the very least, we're going to have more insight about what the concerns are, and what people care about, just as we gained some in October at the discussion there. I know this frustration with the site-specific nature of what the town has been writing in the last 20 years, or whenever, but once you get into this discussion, as I have in watching this working group, you can see that, how difficult it is to come up with a general zoning bylaw that adequately protects each site and the peculiar characteristics that each site has. I mean, on one site, one thing might be the issue, another site, it might be lot line distances, and the third site, it might be the view from the street. You try to write an omnibus thing, you'll see some of it in the, a little bit of, in this article, and then you end up realizing that you haven't adequately addressed another concern. So, this is intended to be very narrow and applicable at two, probably one site. I mean, you should look at it that way, it may be that it applies to some other site, and if it shouldn't, then there might need to be further amendment.
The only comment I, at first glance, read through it, that I have is, in terms of the affordability factor, and obviously I'm on the Affordable Housing Trust, and, you know, big proponent of affordable housing anyways, but this particular site, I'm not sure is the greatest site for affordable housing, only because of the market value, number one, of what these units are going to be, and the fact that in order to get it to the, to be an affordable site, the density has to go up an awful lot, because he's, he's losing in terms of sales value, $900,000 on every unit sale is affordable. You know, he'd need to be better off with an off-site, you know, affordability, or a payment in lieu. I strongly suggest, only because we have a, an Affordable Housing Trust in place with no money, and that perhaps, in this one particular case, a recently decent-sized payment in lieu to the Affordable Housing Trust, that could perhaps then leverage that money to really do some interesting things with affordable housing, may be a better alternative.
It's not something that I'm opposed to, I know, I don't think any developer would say no to that option.
Right.
I think that the problem is that an affordable condominium unit would sell for about $185,000.
Correct.
Estimated based on the, you know, the current SMA statistics and everything. And a condominium at this site is going to be well over $500,000.
Probably.
Much well over. The difference in the cost of, between the price that you would get for an affordable unit, and what you would pay to build it, because the units will be the same.
Right.
Is probably, might be $300,000 per unit. We talked about this a little bit at the town meeting, and it was very hard to pin down, because it depends on the market for the units you're building, and how much it costs to build them. These will be high-end units, so you're correct, there's a $300,000 cost approximately, that has to be recovered somehow by the developer. So if he's required to put in four condominium affordable units...
Right, see the more density?
It's a 45-unit development, 10% is at least four units. He has to recover four times $300,000, and that's where you, why you need the additional density.
Right.
So, you could have a payment in lieu, but if it's the full amount that you are
You don't accomplish.
avoiding, you're not accomplishing anything.
And most towns don't have that.
Unless you just don't want affordable units on that location. So you have to decide, and it's a town, you know, it's really the town that has to make this decision. It could, I can provide language for alternatives on how to fund the affordable units, and I can provide it, you know, separately, but it would be, it would be either part of a recommendation that the warrant committee might decide to make part of this, or it might be a motion that someone would make from the floor. But I think it's something that we have to think about, because we're going to have the same issue with zoning, if more zoning is written for the October meeting, you know. So I agree, it's an issue. I don't want to say that the developer doesn't want to do affordable units, because he has no objection to doing it, certainly the Fandry's have no objection. I don't think the neighborhood in principle objects at all to the idea of having affordable units, but the question is, you know, what effect, is what you just said, what effect does that have on density? Does it make the project denser, and in that sense, less acceptable? The neighborhood hasn't had a chance to sit down and review the zoning, I mean, maybe one or two or three neighbors have looked at it, so there's quite a bit of discussion that's going to have to occur. And there may be other issues as well.
On that note, Marion, I have a question.
Mm-hmm.
You mentioned the neighbors, a couple of the neighbors have seen this?
Uh, three neighbors have seen it, they asked me to send it to them on Sunday, and they have it.
Okay. At various times over the last couple of years, different members of this board, others have tried to encourage the neighbors and the developer to sit down and talk. I know about a year ago, they had some discussions. Has there been any recent conversation within the last few weeks between the neighbors and Mr. Hamilton, or is there anything in the works to try to set that up?
Well, three neighbors, the three neighbors that I sent this to over the weekend, sat down with Mr. Hamilton on Friday, and they had a, they had a meeting. That was in the works for a while, actually, more than a month, but we finally got it set up last Friday. And the last meeting I attended, because I didn't attend that meeting, was a year ago, and it was, it was a group of neighbors and Mr. Hamilton, and it was a good meeting. I mean, you know, Mr. Hamilton said, these are my issues, you know, he laid out what alternatives he felt he could work with, the neighbors talked about their preferences, and, you know, I thought we could have built on that, but it didn't really happen, I couldn't, I mean, it isn't that, you know, people have refused to meet, it's that nothing happened for a long time. Then the neighbors wanted to meet to talk about a proposal they had worked on for eight houses or nine houses. At that time, the developer said, well, I've already said, you know, seven, eight months ago, that that isn't a good proposal, I don't want to do that, and they didn't have a meeting, you know. So that was the only, that was the last foray, you know, last attempt to get people together, that was, I think, perhaps in August or September of this year. There have to be discussions now. I mean, if this is going to be discussed at town meeting, there has to be discussion that takes place during April. I don't know what the outcome will be.
I think everyone would like to see a discussion between the neighbors and the developer, see if there's any way to build some kind of a consensus on what should happen with this property that, that...
Well, and a good outcome is the objective, I think, that we all have. I do too. I mean, I want to see a good outcome. It's a beautiful neighborhood, you know, it's, so maybe this will spur better discussion. In any case, and we're making the attempt, I can tell you that much.
That's good news.
You have, you have the copy, you can review it. Planning board will be, will have it.
And speaking of the planning board, so you said there'll be, is it a public hearing tomorrow on the article?
There's a public hearing on the article tomorrow night. Planning board is meeting both Wednesday and Thursday night, and, you know, they have the Ten Citizen article, I mean, that's what the public hearing is for, but I've already submitted this.
Yeah, that was really my question, so if their hearing is on the Ten Citizen article, are you going to be there presenting this to them as a potential proposal to the warrant committee for a recommendation?
I will, well, I will, for informational purposes, be telling them that I have drafted this, I've already given it to Bill Clark, that we will be talking to the warrant committee about whether they might be interested in producing a recommendation based on a revised, a substantial revision, a much narrower version of the article. They won't be able to, I mean, they'll just be looking at it tomorrow night, they're not going to take a vote on this revised, I can't imagine.
No, no, I understood, but they have a copy of it, that's really my question.
They do.
Yes.
Is that right? Yeah, okay.
They have electronic copy and a hard copy.
Mm-hmm. It's, so it's available, you have it, it's a public document, anyone who wants to look at it can get it from the Selectmen, they can get it from me, Anne McCadrick at gmail.com, I'd be glad to send it out. I think more common review would be very helpful, the sooner the better. So my main purpose in coming in tonight was to just let you know that that's the status of, I had sent some kind of draft last week, and that this is where we are. I'll be waiting to talk to the moderator and see what he thinks, and I know the warrant's going to press, so.
Marion, there was a recommendation for, for eight houses down there? Did that include a bridge over the stream, or was it coming in through the private way?
Actually, I don't know, I never saw what the plan was.
It was the bridge. That was done by the neighbors.
Right.
Yes, but I would assume it probably involved building the road from Ford Ranch Road, crossing the stream with the bridge, and crossing the wetlands. And, but I never saw, I just haven't looked at it, so I don't know what the details were, because the access on the private way has been a key problem throughout this whole discussion for now three years, four years. So I think we're trying to find a way to develop, you know, see that the site can be developed for a good value, and a good way for the town, a good way for the neighborhood, but that takes into account the cost of development as well. And, you know, we'll get a, we'll create a reasonable return for the developer and the owner.
So what's your backup plan if the warrant committee doesn't support the amendment?
Well, it won't be able, if the warrant committee doesn't submit the amendment, or if, we could have an amendment from the floor, but you know how this process works, the warrant committee needs to be willing to look at this, I think. A town board could submit the amendment, I mean, the town meeting allows an amendment to come from any of those sources.
I think the warrant committee, though, will be looking to the planning board for
Yes.
For guidance.
Guidance, yes.
They will.
And I think we will be as well, because, you know, at some point, we'll be asked, what's the Selectmen's if you want it, and we'll want to have some input from the planning board.
Right. So they will have this, I don't expect any decision-making at the public hearing, but I will be looking for feedback after the public hearing, and hopefully at a meeting with the planning board or a... hearing, or however they want to do it.
Is there a follow-up discussion going to take place between Mr. Hamilton and the neighborhood?
The next step, according to the three neighbors, the neighbor that I spoke to was that they were going to go out and discuss this with their neighbors first.
Good, okay.
And then, we're available. That's, you know, I am, if anyone wants me to be there. Trouble with bringing your attorney, though, to these meetings is that, and everybody brings their attorneys, and it sometimes helps and sometimes it doesn't, so, you know. I would like to see the developer sit down with the neighbors, I think that would be a good thing. Or I hope the neighbors will be willing to do that.
In my opinion, that's always the best, you get the best results when...
It's really critical, it's necessary for any development project.
But when the actual developer himself sits down with the neighbors.
I agree. I agree.
And hash out a deal, and then you bring in your lawyers to put it together.
Right.
So I'll be encouraging that, I hope everybody else does too.
All right.
Look like you have anything?
Yeah, sorry, Bill.
I'm good.
Thank you both very much.
Thanks, Mary.
Thanks a lot.
We'll stay tuned, and we'll look forward to word on this one. See what's going. The next item on our agenda is a discussion of the Yulin rink permit extension. Who's going to report on this, Tom or Anne Marie? Or Bill?
I guess any of us can.
Doesn't, yeah.
I'll start it off, and basically, we've got this, in writing now from DCR, the ability to execute an agreement that would extend the five-year operating permit for one additional year, to make it a six-year permit, in essence, under the same terms and conditions, I believe, as the five-year permit was.
That's correct.
With the exception that the rates will incorporate the newly revised rate schedule. So it's just a matter of if we want to do it, and if we want to sign it, and send it back to DCR.
This is for a one-year extension?
Just a one-year extension, which, I mean, the only reason for doing it is to, is really to buy some time if we're going to try and negotiate a long-term
Right.
contract. Obviously, if we turn it back to DCR, greatly diminishes, I think, our ability, I don't think it puts it to bed totally, but it's certainly easier to negotiate while we're still operating
Operating it.
The rink.
What's the status on the park department taking this over?
They're still looking at it.
They won't take it over for the one-year extension.
Right.
They will
The 25-year lease.
heavily consider if we have the 25-year lease.
So the issue of if we're going to take it over for the one additional year, Curry's contract will have ended, it ends with this season. And so we will need a rink manager under the same terms and conditions. We're told by town council that we could extend Curry's contract for a year. They will be, if not at their $550,000 expenditure limit, very close to it, so then the question becomes, is Curry willing to extend their...
Increase their spending?
Yes, exactly. And that's a question, Curry's still going to have to answer.
So who has been in touch with Curry? Bill?
We have to do a negotiation with Curry. There is a scope of services that was prepared by town council. I have it, I've marked it up. I have to now send it back to town council and see if he can remove those items so that I can send it over to Curry. I think that the one-year extension is, we need to have the rink manager in order to accept the one-year extension. Otherwise, we're running the rink, and you all might have night jobs if you decide you want to extend for a year.
Yes, I can run a sample.
I heard that, I'm taking notes.
Well, we have a proposed motion. If that's the case, if we need to, should we be acting on this tonight, or should we be...
My problem we have is it's timing of, we have to get this back in.
I would like to contingent upon, and I think we can work with Curry very quickly. They've known this is coming, they've thought about it, they've heard these things before. I don't think the contract's going to take that long.
Yeah, I just don't know if DCR will accept it with a contingency in it. That'd be my concern. I mean, the contract still will have a 30-day out clause regardless.
Yep.
So worst case, if it falls apart, we have to have a 30-day out clause.
Sure.
Yeah, and the motion is styled as approving and authorizing the town administrator to sign, so
Yes.
It's an authorization to the town administrator. If there's an issue still pending with the manager, that needs to be worked out.
So I think it behooves us to make sure we, we know where we stand with Curry as soon as possible.
Right.
And that's, that's why we wanted to make sure that the contract, that the scope of services in the contract, you know, work for both of us.
Exactly.
Has there been any talks with the Milton Youth Hockey about this?
Yes.
Yeah.
How'd that go?
It went well.
Last, this Monday, the 16th?
Yeah, it was. Everything blends together, I notice, it's taxi signs.
Yeah.
We did have a meeting.
It was Monday, the 16th, at, yeah. Monday, the 16th at 5:00.
We did, we discussed all of the different points, who's doing what, we discussed the schedule. There were a lot of...
Very productive meeting, I thought.
There were a lot of misconceptions at the meeting that...
Were clarified?
I think so, yeah.
I think everybody went away happy, that they felt that they were getting the voice, and, you know, and I think that's all they really want to be, is at least heard.
Yes.
You know, they're not looking for anything special, they're not looking for special privileges, I don't think.
No, I think there were some issues there that they, they didn't understand, but the makeup of the people who were here, the ice coordinator was here, so the issues of ice time, you know, he heard them, he was able to explain some of them away. I mean, I think scheduling was their probably biggest obstacle, but he explained how those things work.
Will, will there be any renegotiations on some of the ice time?
The only thing we talked about a little bit, and it's the only thing we really can do, is, for the most part, that ice time is all accounted for in terms of the prime time with the user groups that are in place right now. So it's not like, it's not like Milton Youth Hockey's getting less time, you know, and...
It's just different time.
Our prime time is already all accounted for.
Totally accounted for.
We don't have open prime time.
So the only thing we, the only thing we can do is perhaps give Milton Youth Hockey a right of refusal if ice time does open up, you know.
Did you mention that to them?
Yes.
Yes, we had that conversation.
Were they okay with that?
Is it permissible to do that under the terms of the contract?
We had, I mean, the issue at the last ice users' meeting was, you know, does anybody else want more ice? And Milton Youth Hockey's comment was, "No, we're good." But he'd get home, and he looked at the plan, and he needed more hours, and he went out to get more hours.
Their program has expanded, obviously, over the years.
Right, and that's the problem. Over time, I mean, a couple of years ago, they had open, they had ice time that they were paying for that they weren't using, so they turned it back. And when they turned that time back, the rink is required by its permit to maximize the rentals. So they did, they rented it out, and those times are now accounted for, and they feel that, or they felt that those were our times. And it's like, no, you gave them up. And their ice coordinator is the one who said, "No, you know, we gave them up, we gave them back." You know, we can't take somebody that's had it for three years and say, "Oh,
You're out.
I'm sorry, but you're out. Milton Youth Hockey's coming in," because our permit specifically tells us we cannot do certain things. And one of those things is to give special preference to the town of Milton, Milton Youth Hockey, or Curry College. So those are the three that wind up taking the...
Right.
We're not giving them special privileges.
Right. Assuming that Curry takes the one-year extension, will they agree to write a first refusal for Milton Youth Hockey?
They pretty much give it to them anyways, because they're the number-one user.
Understood, but are they aware of this request that Milton Youth Hockey wants?
Yes.
They are, okay. Will they agree to it?
As they can, as much as they can. I mean, they, they can't, if somebody's had the same ice for the last 10 years, you can't just say, "I'm sorry, but Milton Youth Hockey wants that ice, you want to go."
No, that's not what I'm saying, I'm actually, if they give it up.
Oh, yeah, if they give it up, that's fine, yep.
Will Milton, will Curry agree to give Milton Youth Hockey the right of first refusal on that?
Yes, I think we're going to have to check it with DCR to make sure that we're not violating anything, but there's two issues. One is, one is the 25, you know, the longer-term lease, and that's a negotiation, so in that negotiation, we can potentially get that in there. On the operating permit, that's a fixed, you know, we're accepting the operating permit you already have.
Right.
So it would be a question for that one-year period of DCR, would that be violating anything?
Okay.
Like give them the right of first refusal.
I only ask whether it's permissible, because there is that language in the contract that you can't give preference to the local community.
Right.
So we should check that out.
Yeah.
Just to make sure it's permissible. This whole conversation just goes to show why this really should not be a selectman's issue. This should be the Park and Recreation Department
We didn't write
who are handling this. So the sooner we can try to transfer this from the selectman to the park commissioners, I think the better. Okay, so we have a motion to approve the town administrator signing the permit extension between the town and the DCR. Curry, it sounds like there's some negotiation that needs to be taking place, whether that's Bill or Tom or Anne Marie. Should we act on this motion tonight?
I think so.
Please. Someone like to offer the motion?
I'll make a motion to approve and authorize the town administrator to sign a permit extension between the town of Milton and the Department of Conservation and Recreation for the right to operate, manage, and maintain the Yulin rink for one year from the current expiration date of April 30, 2015.
Second.
Any discussion on the motion? Then all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, Bill, so you'll keep us up to date?
Yes.
Thank you very much.
Thanks, Bill.
We're on to number 11, the inspectional services appointment of a senior administrative clerk.
I'll make a motion to approve the appointment of Mary Martin to the position of senior administrative clerk in the inspectional services department.
Second.
Any discussion?
I think she's a wonderful addition to the inspectional services, I'm looking forward to having her there. Very personable person.
Congratulations to Mary on her new position.
Yeah.
She served for a lot of years in the police department.
Thirty, she's tenured for 30 years.
Then all in favor of the motion?
Aye.
Aye. Town administrators' report.
Madam Chair, I don't have a report this evening.
Chair's report, I don't really have a report, just an acknowledgement of the, the co-chairs of the Milton Foundation for Education Dinner, I thought, we all attended that event a couple of weeks ago, and they did a great job, Mary Ann Roll and Karen Viveros, and their entire team. That was a very successful evening for the schools, so